Hi, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're coming together to have a, as Jay described, neighbors talking with neighbors discussion about our warrant articles, items that are up for vote in this coming election. We've got select board members on the call, and we're just going to have an open dialogue about what things are being proposed and what our options are to vote and discuss this evening. And our moderator tonight is Jay Bradshaw, and he is going to lead us through that discussion of the items up for vote. Jay, I'll hand it over to you.
Great, thanks, Patty. Thanks all for joining us. This is being recorded and simultaneously broadcast on Facebook as well, so a few opportunities for folks to join us now or after your convenience. The purpose of this is really to have, as Patty described, you know, neighbors talking with neighbors about what are some of the things that are coming up in the town meeting on the warrant. So joining us, we have our town manager, Anthony Wilson. We have the chair of the Board of Select people, Melanie Jewell, and we have Ernie Merkin. And we may be joined by Ricky Dameron. Ricky was having a little bit of a connection issue a few minutes ago, so hopefully he'll be with us as well. But, you know, for as long as Belgrade has been a town, we've had town meetings where typically we gather in the middle of mud season, and we come together as a community just to talk about the town's business. As part of a town meeting format of government, the townspeople constitute the legislative body, and it's up to the townspeople as that legislative body to make the decisions about what happens over the coming year. That work is then carried out by the Board of Select people. But it's the decisions about what we're going to do, what we're going to spend money on, what we're not going to spend money on. Upcoming projects are up to us as townspeople. So historically, this has been an in-person gathering that's taken place. It was at the school for many years, and since the Center for All Seasons has been available to us, that's where we've been meeting. Last year was the first time that that had to change due to the pandemic. When COVID hit, there were actually some towns that were able to squeeze in a town meeting right around this time of year, early March. Belgrade made the decision, I think wisely, that just because of the nature of the virus and the close nature of the town meeting itself, and quite frankly, part of the fun of the town meeting was to have people get together and talk with each other, the decision was to delay it. And I think that we all, I remember a year ago, and this is for starting, we all thought, well, you know, a few months, if things gonna blow over, it's gonna be fine. We're all gonna look back and go, boy, wasn't that interesting? So the decision was made to postpone it several months into the summertime. And at that point, it became obvious we were not going to be able to meet in person. And so we did, went through the referendum process. That was a, that was a big deal, because last year's town meeting warrant was drafted as if it was going to be presented in person, as we've done for a couple hundred years. However, it then got translated or transferred to paper. So this year, recognizing that we're better off than we were last year in many respects, but one of them is that we still cannot gather in person. It brought about some different challenges, and that's part of the setup that I want to lead into. And in just a second, turn it to Anthony and Melanie, the select people, to talk about their thought processes as we get to this point. For those who are joining us on through Zoom, there is a chat function that you're able to use to submit questions to us. For those who are joining us on Facebook, you're welcome to post questions in there. And there are several of us who will be watching out to make sure that we get questions. Just for the benefit of the conversation and to keep the recording as clean as possible, we have turned off the cameras of folks other than the panel, if you will. And we've also muted the microphones, but your comments and questions are most welcome. This is not going to be a public hearing. The Board of Select people did that last night. They went through each article, they read each article, they discussed it in detail. That's been done. The purpose of this evening is to have that conversation about what's kind of the story behind the story. But we certainly want to answer as many of your questions as we're able to do so. So, you know, so Anthony, I'm gonna tee you up first just because you, last year would have been your first town meeting. I guess it still was your first time as our, as our town manager. But you want to just, from your standpoint, from the administrator, chief administrator in the town office, talk to us about kind of highlights of last year as well as what went into getting us to the format that we now see in front of us for this year's town meeting?
Well, I think if, Jay, if we had known that we were going to have just a referendum town meeting last year, we probably would have done the ballot a little differently, because we had in excess of 50 articles. And so for people to get that ballot, and it was a very lengthy ballot, and to stand there during the course on Election Day and fill that out, you know, there were people standing in that polling place for upwards of 45 minutes filling that out, because there's a lot of information on that ballot that they had to read and digest to make decisions on. And so the good news about that process is we had in excess of 900 people who participated in that election and in that, in that sort of form. And so that was great from the standpoint, you had more people than usual making decisions for the entire town. And so I think we all realized very early on this year that the likelihood of us having another town, a traditional town meeting, were pretty slim. And so we decided very quickly, we'd just go ahead and have a referendum town meeting and do it in March, the traditional time that we do it. But one of the things that we wanted to do was cut down on the size of that ballot. And so this year, we have 29 articles total. And we tried to, where possible, combine some articles so that we just have fewer of them. The absentee voting actually begins on February the 19th. That's this Friday. And so, you know, people are welcome to come and get their ballots from the town office. And they can either fill them out there, we'll have a polling booth available, or excuse me, a voting booth available there, or they can take it home, fill it out at their leisure, and then bring it back to us at their convenience. You're muted, Jay. You're good, Melanie.
You're good, Melanie. No, I-
On the computer, guys. It shut itself down anyway, so I'm in on the phone, but I'm gonna try to get back in over here, okay? So bear with-
Absolutely, we'll pick you up wherever we can, wherever you pop in. That'll, that'll be great. So, so the number of the articles was consolidated. Melanie, if you're, is this a good point for you to say a few words as the chair? Or should we circle back to you?
Uh, circle back if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So that's interesting that, Anthony, you're, you know, the point about how many people participated. And I think one of the, one of the things that maybe we could chat a bit about is the format of town meetings going forward. That I know that, I was on the Board of Select persons in the mid-'90s, and there have been, you know, ongoing questions about should the town use referendum, a referendum as its default town meeting because of the opportunity for more people to become involved? I'm a little bit biased, because as the town meeting moderator, I really enjoy the town meeting. And I think that one of the many things that comes from the town meeting itself, although the numbers may be smaller, is that the people are able to be more engaged in the conversation. For example, I know last night at the public hearing, there are questions that come up that perhaps if it was not a ballot format, would be able to be amended on the floor. One of the, so what, there are upsides and downsides of both formats. The upside of having the referendum question is it's much more flexible. People can participate, you know, starting Friday for about a month as opposed to committing themselves to coming to the Center for All Seasons on a Saturday afternoon. The downside is, is really that loss of dialogue. There's the loss of opportunity to learn sort of what's behind the article. There's, there's the loss of the ability to amend articles. And I think there's also, there's that sort of intangible trade-off. There's a beauty, I think, of the town meeting format. It sounds rather courier and hives to say, that's the way we do it in New England, but that is the way we do it in New England. And I think it's a, it's a real community thing. Melanie, are you back with us now on a stable connection? Maybe not.
All right, I think we're back. I don't really want to go back and ever see this one again.
Did you, did you pick, were you able to pick up as you're working through the different connections? The flavor of, we're talking about the, you know, the ballot versus in-person.
Right. So, I mean, we've been kind of forced into having town meeting totally by written ballot. You know, we all had high hopes last year that we were flying by the seat of our pants, literally trying to figure out how we could accomplish town meeting. Could we do it safely? Decided as a group that we couldn't meet in person safely. And hence, everything that we had put together, like Anthony said. There, I, I had a crick in my neck when I was done with the ballot. So, and, you know, we're trying to figure it out this year, like in consolidating certain things. If you compact it too much, part of the reason why the ballot was like it was, was in the past, it had been a little bit too concise. And in the, you know, wanting to be transparent and make sure that folks really understood what we were doing, the ballot had expanded, so there was room for more explanation. And so in tightening that back up, hopefully, we don't lose some of that that we had tried to create.
Yeah.
And I just, I plain, I just plain miss, you know, meeting with people in person. You know, this is the best that we've got. But I definitely miss that.
I strongly agree, Melanie. And I remember when we were meeting at the old school, longtime resident Jamie Minnet, who lived just down the, just down the road from me, was there. And Jamie was a really interesting, I mean, his family had been in Belgrade for generations. And when the discussion was, you know, should we move the town meeting from the first Saturday in March to some other time? And Jamie was, well, what, what would we do during mud season? You know, but for the town meeting, what would we do? And it is, it is what we do. And I remember back in the days, when I first moved to Belgrade, at the end of the town meeting, they literally would pick up the chairs, they'd put down the tables, and there was a bean supper. There was a, there was a community supper that took place. And there would be some very spirited discussions at the town meeting. And yet, when it came time to set up the tables, we broke bread together. It was, it was just a wonderful community experience. And it's heartening in the years that I've been here to see so many people come back year after year after year to the town meeting. Ernie, is Ernie still with us? Yeah. Ernie, did you want to, just as a board member and longtime resident, your thoughts?
Well, I missed the town meeting, you know, just like everybody else. You know, everybody, a chance for people to get together, you know, and, you know, it's more interactive, certainly. I mean, it's all been a learning curve for all of us with the, with, we'll get back to it eventually, I'm sure. We're just doing the best we can. And, you know, I think there's plenty of information during the time of our last in-person town meeting. The communications committee has blossomed and has done a lot of things to get the word out. And of course, we've added Anthony to the staff, and he's quite adept at communicating as well, in a, in a good way. And so it's, you know, there's a lot of ways to get information and to find out all the things that are going, you know, about these topics, warrant articles and such, other things in town. So you just gotta get it from a different source. And that's a good thing. The more ways we can get information out to people, the better, the better informed they are, so.
Now, if we could figure out a way to get Girl Scout cookies out to everybody virtually, we'd be, we'd be in great shape. But let's, let's touch upon some of the articles in particular. So Anthony and Melanie already mentioned about how the articles were consolidated. And if you look back through town meeting, the town meeting warrants for the last couple of years, just decades or so, you would see we've gone from 75 articles down to, what'd she say, 20, 20-something this year? Excuse me. But in addition to the, the number of articles, there have been some changes about how the, how the articles are framed. And Anthony, do you, do you want to just touch upon some of the additional information that's found there? In particular, I'm thinking about the sources of funding. And you are muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So we really wanted to make clear to people how much of each departmental budget was going to be supported by tax dollars, and then how much was going to be supported by other revenue streams. And so we broke that down this year in each article to show those disparate revenue streams and how much they would be contributing to, say, the fire department or, you know, the facility maintenance budget or the general government budget. And then sort of backed out those revenue streams from the total cost of those departmental budgets to arrive at how much would be supported by, by tax dollars. And so we hope that that's helpful information to people. And pretty soon, people will be receiving their annual reports, although it is already posted on our website at townbelgrade.com/annualreport. And, and so we hope that people will read that and inform themselves. But in the meantime, if they have any questions about any of the warrant articles, and those are also posted on our website, on our town meeting page, you know, they are welcome to call the town office, and I'll do my best to answer any questions that they have and, you know, engage in conversation with them.
Yeah, the wealth of information that's in the town report is significant. And I think having that additional detail about the sources of funding is a, is a really positive step forward. So let's, you know, let's just touch upon some of the, some of the things that stood out as I was looking at the town warrant and talked with some of you folks about it. A lot of discussion last night about the mooring ordinance. This is, this is something new that is being proposed. It'll be voted on by folks. I don't know if there's a lot more that can be said. I think that there's been a good discussion about that, but it was one of the things that the board members were split on. It was, it was 3-2 on the board about moving forward. But it is going to go forward. I'll just pause. I know Melanie and Ernie and Anthony, you guys all spent a lot of time talking about it last night. Anything, any other comments that you wanted to, to just mention about that? This evening?
Well, I do kind of feel, I wish that Ricky was able to get on, because he was one of the dissenting votes. And part of his concern with the mooring ordinance was not the substance of it, it was the enforceability and whether we needed another ordinance. So that was, and, you know, we don't have a harbor master. So, you know, our code enforcement officer wouldn't be made the harbor master. But unlike other harbor masters, the town doesn't provide a boat. So, you know, therein lies the issue. And, you know, this is one of the things I've heard from others, is who's going to enforce it? And if it's going to be neighbors telling our neighbors? But the reality is, that's how you do find out a lot of code enforcement violations anyway, is, you know, he's not omnipotent, no code enforcement officer is. So you have to rely on other folks that are closer to saying, hey, wait a minute, I'm not sure this complies. And then, you know, that's how you get the information. So I don't see that this would be any different. You know? So, and I feel that's probably, you know, how it would happen. It would go to the town manager. The town manager would direct the code enforcement officer or someone would contact the code enforcement officer directly. And then he'd be obligated to go out and see what the situation is.
It's interesting. Yes, please, Ernie, go ahead.
But I just, one of the, generally about ordinances in general that I've seen in my time on the board when we've proposed one ordinance or another, it's, there's, you know, there's generally a sense from a certain amount of the populace that there just shouldn't be any ordinance, you know, we, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't we trust people to do the right thing? And, you know, in general, we all do. I mean, you know, we, some time ago, we had some talk about parking ordinance. Well, we had an issue with some parking on the town lot by sources that weren't supposed to park there. And we could put up signs, we could do all sorts of different things, but we don't actually have an ordinance that we could have, we could seek to have enforced by law enforcement or whatever means necessary. And so without an ordinance, we couldn't do anything about it, really. So that's, you know, if, in general, it's like road posting in the spring. If we didn't have an ordinance, when we just, Anthony might be able to articulate this a little better, but we, we kind of recently found out that we, we really don't have a, an adopted ordinance to enforce the idea of somebody who was, was violating the, the road postings. And it does damage to the roads, that's why we post roads. So we had to, we're in the process, I think, of adopting the ordinance recommendation from MMA about road postings, which would help us with enforcement if there was somebody who was, you know, flagrantly abusing that, that restriction. So, I mean, with, with the mooring ordinance, we don't generally have a major problem, but yet there's many of the big lakes in southern Maine that have, and in other southern New England states that are beginning to have this problem. And so we tried to address it ahead of time so that if there was somebody who was flagrantly mooring their boat in a place that, you know, just wasn't the right place and, and a right and full view of landowners, you know, we'd have a way to, you know, to take care of it in some fashion. And so this is kind of what it's all about. But, but, you know, it's, it's hard to craft an ordinance that pleases everybody, that doesn't step on people's liberties. It's not meant to do so in any way, you know, that harms people. It's meant long-term to address an issue that could come up, has come up in parking, could come up in mooring. And, and that's what it's for. But it's, it's hard to make it be tough, but not too tough. You know, it's one of those things.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Ernie. And I think the other, the other point is that these are not, these are not cast in stone, that ordinances are dynamic documents intentionally. And that I think there has, there's already been some good feedback about things that are in the ordinance. And there, once, once an ordinance is adopted, it's a document that is, is able to be amended going through the due process. So as things come up, there's a mechanism in place to review them. I wanted to just sort of touch upon some of the other, other highlights of this, because I think one of the things that's really interesting is, you know, when, I'm going to switch to the recreation budget now, because, you know, when we think of programs that were really hit hard by the impact of the pandemic, one of them was a summer program. And it was delayed significantly. And then, once it was implemented, there had to be reduced enrollment. And the big, the, a big part of the recreation budget is based upon revenues from programs. And I'd like to look for somebody who could just speak to the, the impact that that had on last year's budget as well as what is in this year's budget with regard to the recreation budget, the recreation program? And it, and how the pandemic may affect revenues again this year?
Yeah, so Jay, as you mentioned, the, the level of activity in our recreation program was dramatically decreased, because recreation necessarily involves people gathering and having close social contact with one another. And so as a result, we spent about $60,000 less than what was budgeted in 2020 on our recreation program. And most people would look at that and say, that's a good thing, and it is. But the downside of that is that, you know, we had projected to raise about $95,000 from that programming, and instead, we only raised about $33,000. And so, you know, we had to think about how we wanted to approach our recreation budget this year. And I think this was probably the hardest decision of all the, the budgets that we had. We are hopeful that we will be able to return to a more normal semblance of activity in our recreation program later this year. We've got some exciting programming planned for the Village Green in the summertime, for instance. And even though we weren't able to have the traditional father-daughter dance in February like we normally do, we hope that we'll be able to do that in the fall. And so we budgeted as if we were going to have a more normal experience in our recreation program this year on the expense side. But as you may know, one of the maxims of budgeting is that you budget your, your expenses liberally and your revenues conservatively. And so we've done that. We budgeted our revenues at the same level essentially as what we earned this past year. Now, we're hopeful that we'll have a more robust summer program and maybe some more robust after-school care in the next school year and that we'll be able to offer more rentals in our facilities. But if that doesn't happen, we plan for that. Now, the downside of that is it does rely more upon property taxes in order to support that budget. And we're very hopeful that we'll get back to something that's more normal in 2022.
2021?
Well, we're hopeful we'll have a good year in 2021, but, but hopefully, you know, we'll have the full complement of our programming back in 2022, if everyone goes and gets their shot.
Just as soon as I'm old enough.
Then I'll be waiting a long time.
Yeah, oh, you're just, your kids, yeah. Yeah, that's really interesting. I noticed one of the other areas, Anthony, that has been in the roads project is something, something different planned for this year in terms of getting us ready for, for future projects. You want to talk about that or?
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to hog all the airtime. So Melanie and Ernie, you're welcome to jump in here. But last year, or year in 2020, we did increase the road maintenance budget by $20,000. And so that was an effort to really protect the investment that the community has had, has made in our roads through the paving project. And so we have maintained that level of funding this year. But in addition to that, we're also looking ahead to 2022 when we'll be engaged in our next paving project. And so our road commissioner, Jason Stevens, plans on doing some preparation of those roads that will be repaved in 2022, but doing that work in 2021. So in addition to the 20,000 that we raised the road maintenance budget last year, we've increased that by another 20,000 this year. But we're not paying for that via property taxes. We've got a really healthy, undesignated fund, and so we're making good use of those tax dollars that were previously collected but not spent by using those funds in order to increase our road maintenance budget this year.
Melanie, anything you wanted to, or Ernie add to that?
Well, I mean, you know, years ago, we went to trying to do a five-year plan on the roads, because I'm sure, Jay, you remember, we used to have some huge fluctuations. One year, we'd have, you know, $294,000 in a project, and the next year, we'd have just the regular maintenance. So we had such big swings that that was when we said, you know, wow, can we look at a three-year and a five-year plan and do an assessment of the roads and start coming up with a long-term plan? And so I like that Jason has been able to kind of step right into that. You know, because that's what road commissioners have done in the past as well, is do some of the legwork in the fall or in the previous year, then it settles for a year. And then you can get right into paving in the spring, because now, you know, everything's compacted, all of those, all those pieces of roads that I didn't have a clue about before I got on the select board. Because I always say, everybody brings expertise to the table. So I got really good at listening and trying to figure it out. And I may know how many of the roads in Belgrade used to literally be old goat roads, so.
Yeah, I think it's really interesting. I think some of the more spirited discussions that we have at the town meeting have been what road's gonna get paved? How long is it gonna be before my road gets paved? You can fill in whichever blank you'd like there because we have a lot of roads. But I it it's uh interesting to, I think it's a a a real positive heads up approach to say, we're gonna, we're gonna plan this year for next year, not just in dialogue, but in in action. So that um, I think it it puts you in a much uh better position. I know it's one of the other um big changes. Again, uh, the the goal tonight is not to talk article by article, but just sort of kind of a thirty thousand foot view of the of the warrant itself. Uh, but one of the other uh things that really stood out to me are the uh perpetuity uh articles. This is, this is somewhat newer. We've had, we've had some of these articles that have been in place for a while. Um, and but now they're being consolidated. And I'm wondering if if you or or Anthony can just talk a bit about why, why and what the advantage of of presenting it in this format is. And I for those who are uh trying to follow along at home, it starts on article twenty six. Um, and there's about, uh, looks like there's a handful of articles, twenty twenty six, about four, four, five articles there.
Well, and I'm gonna give credit here where due credit is uh for Becky Seal, because Becky has been a free source of knowledge to the town for years on end. Uh, you know, was an attorney from a municipal association, its focus was municipal law. Um, if she doesn't know the answer, she's always deferred to someone higher up or looked for collaboration or so she has always been trying to help make Belgrade the best that it can be. And has, you know, really asked for points of clarification at town meeting about various warrant articles. So one of the things that she offered was to help us look over some of those perpetuity articles. Some were obsolete. Like the bailing of the newspapers with the scouts. That was a perpetuity article because it had always been voted in. So once we determined once something had been voted in repeatedly, that we could look at doing that as a perpetuity article, and it didn't have to come up every single year. That one, you know, I think the the wording of it says, because there was a liability and insurance liability, but I trust you, that was all covered prior to any scouts doing that. Uh, but the reality is, is there isn't a boy scout troop or a girl scout troop in Belgrade anymore. Um, and I believe there's one where there may be a couple of Belgrade members, so maybe it'll flourish again. But anyhow, just trying to get us to help clean up the warrant, things that, you know, were no longer pertinent, um, get them out. Ones that we could consolidate um under certain headings, let's, let's put those together, or if it's something that consistently the taxpayers say yes to. And um, but it was overwhelming. There were a lot of articles that needed some tweaking. So as, so as not to overwhelm folks, last year, some of those perpetuity articles for two thousand and twenty will have standing so that they could be addressed in two thousand and twenty one. One of them, there was a little tiny bit of brouhaha. Um, one of those perpetuity articles in the attempt to clean it up a little bit had to do with the snowmobile trails and that are maintained by dragon masters. And the wording of the article um essentially would have been changed to say that a certain, that the revenues from snowmobile registrations, a percentage gets turned over to the dragon masters for the maintenance of the trails. But then would also have the language of them being open to the public for non-motorized winter activities. Now, at first glance, didn't see that this could possibly be an issue. But when I took a couple of phone calls and you had a conversation with some neighbors, you start to see it in a slightly different light. So um, one of them was, I gave permission for snowmobiles to cross through my property. I didn't give permission for snowshoes or cross country peers. And when you stop and think about it, the reality is is that I'm all right if you're gonna cross my property at twenty five miles per hour or so, not really slowing down to take stock of of my property. But if you are snowshoeing or cross country skiing through there, now you're possibly hanging out in my backyard for a little longer than folks were comfortable with. And I thought never even, my brain never even went to that, but I could totally see your point. So we didn't have to change the language. It wasn't anything that we were bound by law. Um, and honestly, there was no reason to change something that by if we had changed it would cause so much discontent among you know, property owners were saying they would shut down their access to the trails and and uh, that wasn't the intention at all. So that perpetuity article was reverted right back to what it was before. And, you know, a lot of folks were saying, thank you for just leaving it alone. It wasn't broken. Thanks for not trying to fix it. So.
Interesting. I wouldn't have thought of that um, that other point, but you make a really good point uh about different, different uses of the same path.
Yeah.
So let's see, what what other, are there any other articles in there? I'm just sort of looking at these on another screen, see if there's any highlights that uh we want to touch upon. I I think it's really interesting, and I hope that folks will have the opportunity to really take a read through the the town report. There's just, as I said before, there's a wealth of information in there. And when you, when you see these i- in a handful, literally in a handful of articles, there's a lot of things that 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 the town uh has is involved with that aren't plowing roads and streetlights and and things like this, but there, there are um, things that make our 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 community the quality type of community that it is. So please um, please take a look at that. Um, Anthony, I I can't see if we've got folks um putting any questions into Facebook. I I don't see any in the chat, but.
No, there there are no questions in the chat or on on Facebook. Um, but one thing, Jay, when when you talk about the articles, we were very conscious of the fact that there's still a lot of economic uncertainty with what's going on uh in our town and in our state and our country right now. And so we really tried to focus on the essentials this year in the budget. And so it may be one of the reasons why we have fewer articles than in the past is simply again, just trying to limit ourselves to the things that we know that we've got to do, that you mentioned, you know, disposing of waste or um paving or or plowing roads, providing for fire protection. And so there's not a lot of bells and whistles uh in this year's budget. And and again, hopefully we'll have a a good experience in in two thousand and twenty one, and we can, you know, maybe think a little bigger in two thousand and twenty two, when we're, we're not so concerned about what the economic situation is going to be.
Well, and I think, I I think too, Jay, if I may, I mean, last year and what we did was we we not only tightened the belt, I mean, we put a guard on. And so a lot of things like the paving project at the transfer station was put on hold. Because in the conversation, was this a need, was this an immediate need? Or was this on the wish list, something that we could possibly push off to next year? We had budgeted for it. We had requested funds towards that paving project. But by tightening that last year and not spending that and not doing that, now that went from the, you know, a want to they had to get to the need column this year. Because the ground underneath those containers is not getting any more stable. And so that was something that, you know, we had to slide over to the other column, but we are very cognizant of needs versus wants. Um, just like the majority of us are with our household budgets. So you know, we do have that conversation regularly. Is this something that we have to do now? Is this something that we can look at doing in the future when we feel a little bit more comfortable?
Sure.
Yeah. And 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 the point came up last night during the public hearing, Jay, that um, you're going to see some differences between what was actually spent in two thousand and twenty and what's proposed to be spent in two thousand and twenty one. And that's not because the budget for two thousand and twenty one has increased dramatically. And as Melanie said, we really tightened our belts to hold spending down as low as possible because there was even greater uncertainty about what our revenue from the state was going to be, or how much excise taxes we would collect in in two thousand and twenty. And so uh, we cut back wherever we could. And so this year's budget is really pretty comparable in a lot of ways to what last year's budget was. But when you stack it up against what we actually spent, because we did some belt tightening, it it can appear that there was a big a big jump, and that's, that's not the case.
Well, and I think too, that when when we move forward for next year, a better way so that the folks will understand that is if we're in the same situation, and instead of just having twenty twenty actuals, if we have twenty twenty proposed, twenty twenty actuals, and then twenty twenty one proposed. But it would, of course, move forward for next year because then folks can see for themselves, like the select board budget was one that came up last night and thought, we gave ourselves a heck of a raise. And, you know, in once, once we could explain that, no, twenty twenty proposed budget was actually the same as twenty twenty one. But this is what was spent, and this was why, then it was, oh, okay, I get that. But I think in trying to consolidate stuff, we've eliminated some columns that we might want to put back in next year. You know, so we're definitely a a fluid work in progress and, you know, trying to figure this out. We don't want to be too verbose. But we also don't want to give people so little information because we understand it. We have to make sure that folks have enough information in front of them that they can understand it before they cast their vote.
Well, that's a really good point, and I and I don't want to compare this to the state rainy day fund, because it it isn't a rainy day fund, but but there is um i- in some ways, it's 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 sounds like a little bit of a savings account where you had money that was earmarked last year that wasn't used, but that's, that's, those are funds that don't just disappear. They go into the undesignated fund. And as I think you've nicely done through several of the articles, we can see where where um the amount that we've got to raise from taxes this year is offset by the fact that there were additional funds available to us in the undesignated fund, which sort of gets to, I I know uh one of my favorite articles is always the LD one article and trying to explain at the end why we had to do that. Um, we don't have one this year, uh, because the town is under the levy, uh, which is established uh through the formula that the state has. What is the impact on property taxes? If everything is adopted um as printed, what's the impact? And I realize there's, there's overlay and there's other, other factors that go into it. Where do you see the the um, the tax rate going uh based upon this this warrant?
Yeah, that's a great question, Jay, and uh, and it's one I'm happy to talk about because I'm not sure that people always fully understand that although they write their check to the town of Belgrade, seventy five percent of what they are paying actually goes to our local school system. And then another eight percent goes to support uh county, the county's budget. So that leaves the remaining seventeen percent that is kept and used by the town of Belgrade. So uh, so what happens with our mill rate is largely a function of what happens uh with the school budget. And I have spoken with the superintendent. He thinks that uh the levy for Belgrade will uh increase by less than two percent in two thousand and twenty one. And if that's the case, I think we've got a fighting chance at maintaining the mill rate where it was this year and where it was last year. Uh, I think every one of us would really love to see that. Uh, and we'll work towards that because, again, we realize that families are stretched pretty thin right now economically as well. And so um as I always like to say, keep hope alive.
That's that's your expression?
Well, I borrowed it.
Nice, basically done. Ernie, are you poking your computer, or would you like to say something?
Oh, I just, I was muted there for a minute.
I I didn't know if you were raising your hand or not.
Oh, not well, not the uh, I don't know, I forget exactly what I was. Go ahead.
It's a team effort. We'll, we'll all, we'll all get through it together. Um, well, I, we, well, we've got just a couple of minutes left, and I I thought it might be interesting just to touch upon a couple of other things that are are not necessarily on on this article. And um, one of them is that uh, we currently have a moratorium on subdivisions and uh cell towers and solar farms and that type of thing that's in place due to expire in June. Uh, any previews on, is that likely to um truly end in June, or is it? What's what's the feeling on where we are with that? And I realize that's planning board and that's other, that's a different, different group, and I'm just sort of curious of it's something that affects uh many of us in town.
Yes. So so that's also a very good question, Jay. Uh, our planning board, I think, is outstanding, and they've been working very methodically through an ancient subdivision ordinance, just to make sure that they get it right. And they want to make sure that they got it right as opposed to fast. And so they are still working on that. We are fully confident that we will have a proposed ordinance ready. Uh, and if the main municipal association tells us it is appropriate for us to put that on a ballot in June, then I think that will be the intention to do to do that is to have an amended subdivision ordinance uh before the voters in the summertime, when they decide on the school budget. Um, at the same time, we are looking to amend our uh, commercial development review ordinance in regards to solar farms, wind farms, and telecommunications towers. Because we're really concerned that that ordinance right now lacks the regulation that it needs for the decommissioning of that infrastructure, once it's outlived its usefulness. And we're working with a planner from the Kennebec Valley Council of Governments, and he tells us that will be a very light lift compared to rewriting the subdivision ordinance. So um, I'm hopeful that you know, we may be able to put the amendments to that ordinance before our voters at the same time. And depending upon what the voters do, then, you know, then the moratorium ends.
For those who are interested, is there a a timeline on when a a draft for a public review of the uh subdivision ordinance might be available?
So we've been meeting, the planning board has been meeting with the Kennebec Valley Council of Government Planner, the first meeting of each month, and at next month's meeting on March the fourth, they are going to have a proposed draft that they'll, you know, quote unquote, final draft that they will begin going through.
Will that be available on the website?
Yes, absolutely.
So another another great source of information, in addition to the town report, is our, is the town's website, which is townofbelgrade.com, which is, which has got um just a a lot of great information there. One of the other things that I know has been on the the board's uh discussion is the the issue of contaminated wells down near the the post office and contamination from the the salt um piles over the years. Um, can you just give us a census to to where that's going?
Well, what we had done for last year's budget um was we had set aside fifty thousand um to start a seed fund for how we were gonna deal with the the salt contamination in the wells and in the triangle and and a little bit of offshoot, of course, the way the off or for travels, that's the way the water's going. Um, so you'll notice on the warrant that this year we've set aside a hundred thousand. So there's forty six or forty eight thousand left um in the account. We'd like to add the other hundred to that. Um, and we looked at every scenario that we could, trying to essentially avoid having to create a public water system to help the affected households. And one by one, they were eliminated. So where we're at at this point is DOT is designing a water supply, public water supply system for Belgrade. Um, essentially, the, we will build it, they will come as DOT's version, and then the town of Belgrade would take over the maintenance and the operations. So working on that, working on what can we bring to the table for bargaining tools? I mean, one of the uh pieces is that we saw an uptick in the well contamination once the roads in that triangle were determined to be salt priority. So in moving forward, you know, it, we've asked DOT to change the status of that same roadway back to what it was previously um to see, you know, if that helps. What we don't want is to keep compounding the situation. Because what we're looking to do right now is limit the number of households that can tap into this, to the ones that have been identified and are Because what we're looking to do right now is limit the number of households that can tap into this, to the ones that have been identified and are currently affected. So we also have to look at parameters on new construction. So the.
Is it, is it reasonable, is it generally felt that it, the houses that are affected are in that triangle? Or what about some of the ones that are across the street from the cemetery? I don't remember the name of the, it used to be Lazy Beaver Estates, but you know, the. Are they, are they in, involved in this?
There is minimal in Pinewood and minimal on Depot Road.
Wow. The Cross is twenty seven. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, well, it's the way the aquifer goes.
So what, so water does, right?
It does.
Interesting. Yeah, that's, that's a big issue. And, you know, I, I, as I mentioned about Tommy, I, I remember back Clyde Bickford talking about how much salt costs us because we, we pay to buy it, we pay to put it down, we pay to pick it up, and then we pay when it contaminates wells. And it's, it's an expensive process to keep our roads clear.
And of course, the flip side is if you have too much sand and not enough salt, you know, the amount of phosphorus that you're then, you know, can, leading to, you know, changing the ecosystem of the lakes as well.
It's a big deal.
Not to mention, as it does to vehicles and so forth.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you. This has been, this has been really helpful. I'll, I'll turn it back to Patty for, for wrap up. I appreciate Ernie, Melanie and Anthony, you're, you're joining us as well as those who joined us on Zoom. This will, this recording will be available at the, at the town's YouTube channel. And we very much appreciate those who were able to join us this evening. Patty, I'll, I'll turn it back to you for closing comments.
Yeah, thank you, Jay. Thanks for leading the discussion and bringing up pertinent questions and ideas and things on the warrant articles and other things that we are talking about as, as we meet together. I do want to remind everybody that on March third at six thirty, we're going to have another community forum. And we're going to be able to meet select board candidates. So Ernst Merkin, Barbara Allen and Corey Alexander. And so if you want to join us and talk to and meet those individuals, you're more than welcome. Please tell people about it so that they can hear what these individuals have to say as well. In addition, just a reminder that polls do open and they're open from eight to eight on March third, March twentieth. And Anthony, could you remind us exactly where to find it on the Town of Belgrade page?
Yes. So all the information that you need regarding the town meeting, and that includes the annual report. It includes a sample ballot. It includes the warrant. It includes the proposed mooring ordinance. And all be found on the town's website at townofbelgrade.com slash town meeting. And, and to add what you just said, Patty, absentee voting begins on Friday, February the nineteenth. We also have an application on the town meeting page where you can apply to receive a mail ballot. But, or you can come by the town office and pick that up, fill it out there or take it home and return it at your convenience. So the absentee voting period will extend through March the sixteenth.
Wonderful. And Anthony, they have questions up here email that they can reach out to you?
Yes, townmanager@townofbelgrade.com. So Melanie, you were wanting to jump in there?
I did just, yeah, so the absentee ballots, just to make sure that folks know if you, if you want to return it to the town office, but it's outside of the town office as usual hours, that there is the ballot box on the far end of the town office. So you can put it in a secure ballot drop box at your convenience.
Yep, yep. If you don't want to come inside, you don't have to. We've got a really sturdy drop box on the north side of the building.
And grab a sled and go for a sled while you're there.
There were lots of kids there today.
It was really nice.
Wonderful. Thank you, all of us. Thank you, select board members, Melanie, and thank you, Anthony, for joining us for this community conversation.
Thanks. Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Bye bye.
Bye bye.